Let me just get the zoom, I just have.
Of course, that to start. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call it over at the July thirteenth Planning Board meeting. Our first, our first order of business is roll call. Tamara?
President.
Melinda?
Present.
And I am Dan Cobb, also present. David is excused this evening, so it will be just the three of us. Next up is minutes approval. This would be approval of the minutes of the June eighth meeting. Does anyone have any comments or corrections on those?
I would like to amend and have you listed as excused on the roll call.
Okay, thank you for that.
No other changes? I move approval of the minutes as corrected.
I didn't have any, I wasn't present.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine. So I had no other comments, but, so there's a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, that's fine. I like the efficiency. That's what we're aiming for tonight. Okay, next up is information exchange. And I think Kristin had a couple bits of information to share.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Chair, the, just updating you folks on the LD two thousand and three. The, on Friday, June sixteen, there was a significant change in delaying it. The implementation date has been pushed to January one of twenty twenty four for communities such as Gray that have a town council form of government. So we are, we have some more time now to work toward aligning with the state's implementation date to have our ordinances in effect as well. So that'll be coming to you when we get to the public hearing point. It'll be coming before you, just as a, as a heads up.
Nice. I have a question on that. So to my earlier point on this topic, I guess I'm looking either way, whoever wants to answer it. But does that mean as we make changes that you can, can or should sort of hold them in the queue until the state laws come into effect? So we're not like making changes to ordinances and then changing them again when the state changes their mind? Or what's the plan there?
I know there was a question in there somewhere.
So, well, the question, the question is, you guys could take action on something that's currently contemplated, right? And you could implement it in the next, like, say ninety, thirty, you know, whatever.
The answer is, we play with the cards we're dealt. So we thought we had a deadline and we worked towards the deadline and they moved the deadlines. So we'll make adjustments. We want to do the least amount of rework humanly possible.
Yep.
Not only for ourselves, but for the staff. I could go on, but I won't.
That's fine. I guess my point is, like, we won't rush to implement things in advance of.
We're not trying to be first.
Yeah, okay. That, that was essentially my question. Anything else from anyone? Okay. And then I think you had some town business updates as well.
Yep, just as a heads up, the town council has set a date of Thursday, October five, for the annual meeting of all the town committees and boards. So if you can kind of set that aside, I don't, I don't know, Council Maguire, if you have a time, if that's an evening thing or day thing or.
No, we just have, we just picked out a date.
Just a date.
To make it far enough in the future that we hopefully don't forget the most people to town. It was what we see last year, so.
We're hoping to build on that.
So October five. And then separately, I was reaching out to ask if the planning board might have availability to change the date of the August meeting. Either the town manager's asked me to attend a conference instead, and I won't be here physically the week of the seventh. I could potentially participate remotely, but sometimes the, that can be difficult.
Yep.
So just throwing it out there to see if it's a possibility with, with your schedules. If not, we'll figure out something else, but.
So if the three days you put out there, I could, I could do Monday or Thursday, but not Wednesday during the week of the fourteenth.
And I can do Monday or Wednesday, but not Thursday, so that leaves us Monday. If that might work.
I could do Monday or Wednesday, but also not Thursday, so I guess we're on Monday.
If everyone's good with Monday, we'll move it to Monday, the fourteenth? Or were you saying Sunday is the week of the fourteenth?
Let's see, let me look at it before I get confused here. The fourteenth is Monday.
Yep.
So yes. Thank you for flexibility on that. I'll, we'll put it up on, on our schedule and make sure everyone's aware of that. I think in particular, some of these folks too might be impacted if, if you're looking to come to, to August, so August fourteenth.
I don't know that we need to make any, any kind of vote to change a meeting night, do we? Or do we?
We typically vote on the schedule. You typically vote on the schedule, which is something we'll be bringing soon for next year. But I don't, I don't think a simple alteration needs to be voted on. I.
Okay, I'm good with it. So we're moving it to Monday, the fourteenth. Okay, anything else?
Good for me.
Any other information from the board? Okay, keep moving along then. So next up is new business. The first and only item of new business is sketch plan review of Campbell Acres subdivision amendment. This is a request by McDonald Brothers Custom Builders LLC, represented by DM Roma Consulting Engineers for a planning board sketch plan review of a proposal to create three lots in the Campbell Acres subdivision on the seven point one-two plus or minus parcel off Jenny Road. I think it's Jenny Drive, actually. Map fifty-six, lot seventeen dash twenty-eight dash oh-three in the rural residential and agricultural zoning district. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review. We have an applicant.
My name is JP Conley. I work for DM Roma Consulting Engineers and I represent McDonald Brothers Custom Homes. So I, I have some plans I'd like to distribute, if you don't mind. I believe they'll come up on the screen as well. But I just, I always like paper in front of me.
Yep, I think I have printouts. If you don't have enough, I have.
I've got them. I brought eight.
This is different from what's in the packet, right?
Slightly. So when we went through the design, they, they substantially conforming to this site plan, or the site plan that was provided. The changes that we had to the lot lines and the road layout were due to the steepness of the road. In your ordinance, you require the, the horizontal radius of the road to increase any time the percent, the grade of the road is greater than five percent. So we've had to straighten that road out a little bit and reorient it to make it work. So, and quite frankly, what I have in front of you is more of the plan that we plan to implement when we submit for preliminary subdivision approval. And on the second sheet, I have developed a grading plan with the planning profile that shows more of the design. But briefly, I'll just describe the project location and the background for it. So this is an amendment to a subdivision for Campbell Acres. That was, I think, prepared around twenty twenty-one and then revised through twenty twenty-two. And it was recorded in May of twenty twenty-two. So we're looking at developing one lot of that development, and it's a seven point one-two acre parcel. And it's in the rural residential, or rural residential agricultural district. What we're looking to do is create three lots and construct duplex units on each lot, so six units in total. So we've provided a road layout that meets the zoning ordinance as well as developed the, the grading plan for the, the project itself. Due to the fact that the lot has a pretty steep entrance and a ridge line before flattening out to, you know, real nice lot areas, we, we wanted to make sure we developed the plan a little further before we came in front of you. And so we got going with the design and realized, well, we're gonna have a steep road, so we have to alter the, the road layout or the ordinance. And this is what we've come up with. So as you can see, the lots there are basically, the houses are around, the finished floor of the houses is, is pretty close to existing grade. That was a goal of ours. We didn't want to have a plan that was forcing the developer to put the, the buildings with steep cuts or steep fill. In this case, it would've been steep cuts if we just kind of did some real gradual grades. And as you can see, there's a significant amount of cut for about a hundred and fifty feet of that road on the planning profile. So drainage was a concern, so I wanted to make sure I get culverts to work, et cetera. And so with this plan, I've developed that. And so it, the, the grading of the road is fairly steep. Twelve percent max grade is what we hit. That twelve percent grade extends for about a hundred and twenty feet of that road. And, you know, the, the, so three driveway culverts, or three culverts in total. One at the intersection of the road at Jenny Drive. One intermediary, which I plan to basically use to address stormwater concerns. I, I plan on developing a stormwater basin in this area. And then one driveway culvert for that lot. Grades for the driveway are fairly gradual, and I provide a twenty-foot opening at the edge of the driveway. That's four percent or two percent, so it's a flat landing area for parking right in front of the garages. The driveways are, for the duplexes, are right now twenty-eight feet in, in width. So basically, each individual property or unit has ample space to park in the driveway. I'm not, I want to make sure everybody can pass freely with two different units. So I don't want to take up too much of your time. I know you've got a very busy agenda, but I was hoping to get your comments and, and first impression on this plan.
Anyone feel like starting?
Just doing the site walk.
Okay, any, any comments or questions on anything that's presented? Melinda?
Yeah, a site walk will be really informative, I think.
Yep, we doubt, we need to schedule one, so yes.
Hard to picture without it.
I mean, it looks, it's not the most complex plan out there, so I don't have any questions at this time. But we do need to schedule a site walk, so we can go ahead and do that. When are you thinking you might be ready for one? I would think that we would want to, you're definitely gonna want to stake out the curb cut, probably the center line of the road and driveway locations.
Yeah, absolutely. That's something I could do probably as soon as Monday, quite frankly. So I can accommodate whatever schedule you guys like.
Okay, well, we need to, it wouldn't be that quickly because Kristin needs to notice it, so.
Um, if we, if you set the date in public form, it, that serves as notice.
Okay. So you could be ready next week?
Certainly.
Okay. Does the board have any preferences on some dates? Wednesdays are not, I can tell you, Wednesdays are not going to work for me, so.
The nineteenth is definitely not good for me either.
Yeah, it's not good for me.
And the twentieth is not good. It looks like I could do Monday or Tuesday after work. Or after.
The only thing with the site walk, I think this serves as public notice, but we need to notice a, a butters.
Okay, so you're.
So we do need to push this out a little bit.
Okay.
I, I am out of office next week.
Okay, so we'll forget that.
So that's gonna push us back a little bit, but I could ask our planning assistant to take care of getting that letter out in a timely fashion. If you wanted to look at the week of the twenty, I'll give them the mail. The week of the twenty, maybe later in the week of the twenty-fourth? Or the first week of August? Just trying to think about giving a butters enough time to get their mail and know about it and plan.
Yeah, yeah. So the twenty-seventh could be a possibility, or then we're into the first week of August?
Yeah, I could do the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh does not work for me.
Okay. So we could look at the thirty-first.
We could do the thirty-first.
That's Monday.
I am possibly out of town. I don't know for sure if I'm not. How about another day that week?
I'll just keep going forward, Tuesday?
I, oh, Tuesday, Wednesday. I could do Thursday, the third.
I could do Thursday.
Thursday looks okay, so it'll be Thursday, August third at, how much time does everyone need to get over there?
I can see. I can do whenever on Thursday.
I can, I can work from home and do four thirty-five, five o'clock.
Okay, about five o'clock?
Yep.
All right, five PM. Thursday, October third.
August.
August third. All right. I think that's it then.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you again.
Yep, sounds good. Okay. Next up then is new business with public hearings. This is an amendment to an approved site plan and subdivision plan for Avesta Meadowview Two. This is a request by Avesta Housing Development Corporation, Avesta Meadowview Two LP and Gray Senior Housing, Inc., presented by Ransom Consulting LLC for review of an amendment to an approved site plan and subdivision plan for a multifamily twenty-six-unit senior housing development located near sixteen Hancock Street. Tax map forty-three, lot four oh five dash thirty-nine in the Village Center zoning district. This application received approvals in June twenty twenty-two for site plan, conditional use and subdivision review, as well as multifamily housing standards and village design standards. I need one second to change materials. Okay.
All right. Thank you. I'm Maureen McLoane with Ransom Consulting, and I'm here tonight resem, representing Avesta for the Meadowview Two amendment. And I'm told all I need to do is push this little button and magic will happen. There we go. Okay, so as we discussed previously, the project site obviously is adjacent to Meadowview One, which is off of Hancock Street. This is the previous overall site plan, just to kind of refresh everybody's memory. Only refreshing it at a very small scale. So as previously discussed, there was an elimination of the easement on the adjacent parcel, which required amendments to our plans specifically around the fifty-foot perimeter buffer, the addition of stormwater treatment and power and communications, as those things had previously been in the easement. With regard to the fifty-foot perimeter buffer, it shifted back onto our property rather than on the adjacent property, which in turn shift, caused a shift to the building location as we were only thirty-eight feet from the property line initially. It also had a shift to the access road as there was a sliver of that previous access road that was within that fifty-foot perimeter buffer. So we shifted that upwards. There was a modification to the fire access, modification to parking lot layout as a result of the building shift, and an additional retaining wall as a result of the building shift. So I've tried to highlight real roughly those areas that we've had those major shifts. So at the top of the screen, you can see an orange line that represents the retaining wall. The retaining wall was put in place to maintain the separation between the fifty, uh, between, between the building and that seventy-five-foot stream setback, so we could not have any grading in that seventy-five-foot stream setback. The blue is the building that shifted upwards, and it was literally just shifted upwards. The lighter blue or cyan is the parking lot shift as well as the access road shift. So the access road straightened out a little bit, but is just outside of the fifty-foot perimeter boundary. The red line, the red dash line at the bottom of the screen represents the fifty-foot buffer. The parking lot shift, essentially the previous parking lot, and actually, if I could just go back to this, it might be clearer. If you can see that sort of on the east, yeah, on the east side is north is on the left side of the page. There were four spaces adjacent to the Meadowview One spaces, and then there were eight spaces designated adjacent to the proposed building. With this new layout, we are straightening out and proposing eight spaces next to the Meadowview One spaces and four spaces adjacent to the new building. The majority of those spaces are handicapped accessible spaces. The green represents the change that we made to the fire lane. Previously, the fire lane was paved, and we are now proposing green pavers, or grass pavers. And it was part of a conversation with the, the fire chief. So we were able to provide grass pavers that would meet the requirements of the weight limits for the vehicles. In addition, we are adding six new eastern red cedar along that property boundary in an attempt to put a block of trees from the adjacent property so that as they grow up, you'll have limited view of the building. The stormwater treatment, piece of it was addressed through providing local treatment through roof drip edge filters, focal point bioretention cells. Similar to the drip edge filters for the roof was a drip edge filter at the access road, as well as subsurface storage to provide the pre and post flow calculations. So again, trying to identify and limit your, having to look and hunt for it. The lighter gray around the building represents the locations of where we're proposing the roof drip edge. The green represents the three focal points that we're proposing to pick off stormwater runoff from parking areas as well as a portion of the roof. The darker gray along the access road is the, the, the drip edge that we have proposed along that access road. If there are any questions about what those treatment methodologies are, I'd be happy to answer them. In addition, the power and communications had been previously through an easement from the adjacent plaza. Now, the new approach is to bring three-phase power from Route one thirty-five, uh, one fifteen. We met, Avestor, myself, and the electrical engineer met with CMP onsite and discussed this possibility in the routing. And they have identified that the poles that are currently out there, they can place new poles adjacent to those existing poles, which will be moderately larger. And in their view, that meant about five feet taller and less than six, six inches in diameter larger than what's existing out there. The impacts by those new poles, because the, the wire, they're three-phase, so you're gonna have additional wire on those poles, there's gonna be an additional span on those poles. And the impact is tree trimming around those additional wires. Based on what we've seen, or what we saw out there while we were looking at this, there's very, very limited trimming on Hancock. The majority of the trimming is gonna be on the site itself. Because that's fairly open on Hancock. This will also result in potential upgrades to the services out on Hancock Street. And the reasoning for that is there's a, I guess there's a bit of an outdated system that currently exists where there's one transformer and that serves multiple homes. The thought process, while we were discussing it with CMP, is that they're gonna attempt to provide a new transformer for each home so that it minimizes any disruption of service if there's an outage in a transformer. It also provides the town with the ability to potentially utilize that three-phase power on Hancock Street for improvements to the library. This is the revised overall site plan, which unfortunately is a small scale, but you've got it in your packets. There are several poles along Hancock Street that will be affected. I think there's six poles along Hancock Street. The last pole is at the intersection where Hancock Street makes that bend. And then there's a seventh pole onsite that will require a new pole as well. And CMP offered and addressed a solution for getting the underground service to the building. And they'd suggested providing the, a new utility pole, an additional utility pole onsite. And that proposed option is in yellow. In addition, because that proposed pole is within the fifty-foot buffer, we have also identified an alternate route if it is undesirable to have that, that pole within the buffer. That alternate route is shown in green. And that concludes the presentation part. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Should I have done that?
Any initial questions?
Hold on. I'll just go back so that our folks at home can at least see something instead of a black screen.
I'll start with you, Tamara.
Yeah, I guess just that last one in terms of, see, the two options. I don't know if you want to pull that back up.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. So in your package, you'll see that there's, we do have, we do have both routes shown. And the difference between them is we would not install the new utility pole into the, into the buffer. Would install a second pole on the other side of the driveway and then go on, then go over to the, the underground box. It, it was a little bit, you know, it's a little bit more, I guess, complicated, but it's, we provided the alternate.
That was, I guess, my question was just the pros and cons. The con, obviously, of going in the fifty-foot buffer, but what, what was the con of the?
Yeah, with, with the con, you're going underground a little bit more, and you've got to then provide for that along that roadway, but.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, Melinda?
No, no immediate questions at this point. I think that was.
No, no immediate questions at this point, I think that was useful.
Thanks.
Oh, she's going to wait until I misstep.
I just have one initial question. I heard you say that CMP would place new poles adjacent to existing poles?
Yeah.
And does that include removing the existing poles?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Removing all utilities to the new poles?
That is, yes, that is, they're not just going to put, yes, that is the intent.
Make sure they do that.
I'm not going to guarantee when, I'm just going to tell you that that's what they're doing.
Okay, I wanted to make sure we weren't doubling up poles on that side.
No, no, they're going to take the other poles out, yes.
Okay, that's it for now, we'll have some deliberations for sure later. So, I'm just going to, I'm going to proceed through the memo with you, so you don't have any requested waivers. I see a note in the memo that you've reviewed and confirmed agreement with the town consulting engineer comments, so nothing that we need to go over there, then?
No.
Okay. And the board is okay with the consulting engineering comments, as I am. Same thing with public safety, you're good with that conversation, nothing to discuss, okay? And then, there are a number of comments from town staff. Did you have anything there that was of concern?
No.
I've got some stuff around, around the buffer that I want to talk about at some point. We don't have to do it now, we can do it during our discussion, I think. So, I'll hold off on that. Utilities and stormwater staff comments, no any concerns there?
No.
Okay. All right, sounds good. So, I just read that we actually were supposed to remove this item from the table, since it was tabled.
Yeah, for the public hearing.
Oh, just, oh, the public hearing, okay, that makes sense. And we've, have we not done a public hearing yet on the amendment?
No, it was tabled last time, we did have one person show up, and Tamara was chairing the meeting, we did allow them to speak, to share their comments with the board, but it was not a formal public hearing. So, it has been re-advertised, re-noticed, this is the formal public hearing tonight.
Okay, so, we will hear a motion to remove this from the table, so we can have a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove this from the table, so we can have a public hearing. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. So, having removed it from the table, I will open this application up for a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this application? Please step up to the podium, introduce yourself, and I think there's a sign-in sheet for you.
I would just like to have a map, that's all, for the new proposal. I looked at, I'd like a map of that.
Sure. I don't know what to do with it, but definitely because of it affects us.
So, the public that's watching can't hear you when you speak, so you have to go to the podium. Thank you. They won't know what's happening when, if you, if you guys are not talking into the
My name is Cindy Rogers, and I live at Meadowview, and as we've all been following this, and we had a meeting at the very beginning telling us, Avesta had the meeting telling us what they planned, and all that's been planned has been changed, and we haven't been notified. I would like very much for my neighbors and I to have a map of the new plans.
Okay, I think either the applicant may be willing to do that, or the town can provide you with one. Does someone want to offer that up?
I would just, I would need contact information if we're, if we're doing it, if you want to share a mailing.
Well, I mean, I think you can share it with the person that asked, or Avesta would have the entire, you know, list of people if you choose to share it with everyone.
Yeah, we would be happy to do that.
Okay.
You can send your contact information.
All right.
Okay, so, Avesta will provide you and your neighbors that requested information.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else from the public wish to speak? Don't see anyone in the room. Kristen, anybody online?
Don't see any hands raised, or anyone turning on their video, so.
Okay.
Don't think so, there are some Avesta folks online, just for the, so the boards aware of who had other questions for them.
Okay, so, I will close the public hearing on this item then, and we can move to our discussion points. What am I looking for here? Okay, so, first up, does the multifamily 50-foot buffer meet the requirements of the ordinance as proposed? Would anyone like to get started on that topic?
I think the applicant's representative mentioned some additional trees, I don't know if those are, I don't think those are shown yet, and you said those are along the property boundary line, so they would be buffering not only the development, but also all of the snow storage. Is there anything in our materials that shows?
Yeah, should be on the landscaping plan, L-1. Which is likely at the very end.
I want to see the landscaping plan, we've come in via email.
I didn't see it, that's why.
It was in with the, it was, should have been with the full package.
I didn't bring my device to look at it. Can you pull it up here for us?
Yeah, yes, I can.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go.
So, the extent of the additional planting that you're proposing, are the, what is it, six cedars?
There are six eastern red cedar.
Just in that one location?
In that one location.
So, my initial thought with that is that that doesn't really seem to buffer the new locations of the snow storage, which are now going to be located in the buffering area.
Right.
I don't know what, I mean, is the, all of this area currently is wooded, I presume, so is there going to be part of the buffer which is going to remain, and what, what sort of screening is going to be available for this development, including the snow storage? Either that exists, even when you have something that exists and you're hoping that you leave it, it often gets traumatized by the adjacent clearing and doesn't make it, so I think it's really important, given the concessions of how this development changed, and the buffer now has things in it that weren't originally in the buffer, that we would want to see some more robust screening, at least that's what I think when I look at that plan.
Okay.
Let's, let's get everyone's thoughts on the buffer before you just, I don't, you know, it's just so you're not responding to individual board members.
Yes, right, that's my, that's definitely my thought, is the need for more.
Sorry, my okay was because I understood what she was saying.
That's fine.
I should rephrase that.
Similar, I was feeling the same, that's what we had discussed.
Yeah, and my thoughts are along the same lines. I guess what I'll add is, yeah, I think you need a lot more on the buffer, and, you know, the question is, does it meet the ordinance? And if, and I'll just say flat out, if you were proposing this from like ground zero, there's no way that I would go for it. However, I think that, you know, we're a long ways along, and you guys had made a good faith effort to have a buffer in a different location, so I think, I feel because of that, we have some room to be flexible with the application, but I just want to put it out there that if this were the plan from like the get-go, it would be a hard no for me. But having said that, and the reason I say that is because the, you know, our ordinance very clearly reads that it's a strip around the perimeter of the proposed land area, not necessarily the building footprint, but the proposed land area, so I would argue that the proposed land area is more than the building, would be one. And then, two, the required buffer strip needs to consist of undisturbed vegetation, and we're, you know, yielding there with some, some green grass pavers, which is a green area, but it's not really a buffer, and it's not undisturbed. So, I think in exchange, you know, for that, six cedars doesn't really cut it. You've, you've got a road that's right up to the buffer. I don't agree with this area of reserving four parking spaces within the buffer, I don't understand that, because if it's a buffer, I think, if I remember right, if I read it right, you're not initially proposing parking there, but you are reserving it if additionally needed, is that?
That is correct.
Yeah, so.
And that parking would also be grass pavers.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's not really adding up to me to encroach into the buffer any more than absolutely necessary, because as I said before, you could always make your building smaller, and you don't want to do that. So, I feel like that buffer needs to be replanted where it's not undisturbed, and be a pretty good, like a, I don't want to say a complete screen, but it needs to be at least as substantial as what's there, if not more.
Agreed.
And just to, and then last piece I'll say is, I would have the same comment on the power pole. I get that it's more complicated to do it the other way, but, you know, I don't really think it's reasonable for us to say, yes, we can, you can encroach in the buffer just because it's harder or more expensive for you. If you have a way that you can do it without encroaching in the buffer, I think you need to do that, so, those are my thoughts. So, I guess at this point, we would invite any response you have on buffering, unless anyone has anything additional.
Okay, so, I have no objection to the alternate route. I do have Kyle from Avesta here, and I believe Sarek Cap is on remotely. I don't know if he's able to chime in, if he's on remotely, but.
I think so, he should be able to raise his hand, and Kristen can.
Do you want me to bring him in at this point?
Are you asking for?
Yes, yes, I'd love for either one of these guys to kind of step up and tell, tell the board what they're willing to provide for landscaping. And I specifically had asked Sarek to jump in for that, for that type of question, we knew it was coming.
Yeah, we'd be happy to make that happen.
If you want to go, go ahead and turn on your sound and camera if you can, if you want to.
It's very, very quiet on the mic.
Don't think it's working. Do you want to try the chat, Sarek? You want to type, type something?
Let them respond, see if you can use the chat.
He says we can add to the buffer and trees.
Yeah, we're certainly willing to add, or have a more robust buffer if necessary, if we could get maybe a little bit more specific in exactly what, you know, y'all are looking for, that'd be very helpful to us.
If you have any thoughts on maybe what type of plant things you want to see?
Quantities.
Quantity would be helpful.
Yeah.
I'm not a host, so, no, I, if, I don't know if Kyle, Kyle, if you can mute, remute Sarek Cap. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So, participants, sorry.
I mean, I think we don't want to get into designing the plan for you.
Nope, that's fine.
Right, yeah, that's fine, but I think the, the feedback would be, you know, we're kind of bending the rules here, so it needs to be at least or more substantial than what would be there if it was undisturbed, I think, is, that's the message that I would have for.
The one additional thought I would add is that it should have a mix of some evergreens along that, so that the buffering is year-round and not, but, you know, not like a uniform line of trees, it should look as somewhat natural, and that's where, you know, a landscape person knows what to do.
Yeah, obviously, we'd get the landscape architect to provide a, an updated plan, and we'll, we'll provide a mix so that it will be year-round screening.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the buffer?
You probably can't see her, but she's.
Have her repeat the question, maybe, at the mic?
Yeah, so.
I just want to know, Kyle, is there going to be a buffer between this new road and the apartments that are already there? Like headers or, I don't think, because your break sounds.
So, I'll allow the question, if you could please repeat it into the mic and answer it for us, that would be great.
Right, the, the question was, is there going to be a buffer between the proposed access road and the existing buildings? And there is a proposal on the table to include five sea-green juniper and a tulip tree to help, between the roadway and that, and that building.
Thank, thank you for answering that.
Yeah, this is a PowerPoint, so I can't really point to it.
Okay, so, nothing more from the board on buffers?
Yeah.
Second topic, does the board wish to require buffering and potentially boulders to protect buffer trees to the property line abutting the snow storage area? So, I think it might be useful if you could bring up your graphic again that highlights the snow storage, so we can make sure we're all looking at the same thing.
Yep, we've got snow storage along the western side of the road. In addition, there's snow storage off of the fire lane, both at the end of the fire lane and at the side of the fire lane.
So, I mean, the concern would be that the snow doesn't get pushed further and further into trees and, and, you know, killing them and whatnot. So, I don't know what, any thoughts that the board has on something like that?
Given the staff's suggestion about something to protect those trees, bouldering, I would, I think that sounds like, makes a lot of sense. Again, the snow storage was not, you know, would not normally be in the buffer, so, you know, all things to make that buffer as much like a buffer, and as undisturbed as possible should, should be done, I think.
Okay.
I hadn't, when I, when we first talked about this months ago, it didn't occur to me that, oh, you know, a snow pile creeps, and the gravel and whatnot moves, and I should know that, I've been in Maine a long time, but, yeah, something to, I guess what never occurred to me is that it was possible to stop it, so if there's some bouldering that can be done to keep that from being pushed into those new little baby trees that are getting planted, that would probably be best for that buffer to work like a buffer, so.
Yeah, and I agree, I think it would be wise to do some natural bouldering type of thing that defines the snow storage, so it doesn't grow over time. I did see a note from, I'm not sure what his role is with Avesta, but he mentioned that, I saw it flash up briefly, that snow would be removed if it grew too, the pile grew too large. that snow would be removed if it grew too, the pile grew too large. So, yeah, he has stated that as well.
Yeah, that is the intent. There's, there's a snow management plan to be able to remove it.
Yeah, and, and just, you know, as far as how the, that snow storage, you know, fits with the buffering. To me, obviously the, the thicker plantings that you add should be concentrated where you've removed natural buffer. So, um, you know, it's been a long time since I've been out there, but I think you get the, the gist of what we're after there. Next up, stormwater plan. Any comments or concerns around the stormwater plan?
I did not have any.
And I, I thought it was, uh, fine also. Um, any concerns related to propose new poles for the three-phase power connection via Hancock Street? I raised my one concern. Any others?
No concerns.
None here either.
And then, um, last up, does the board agree with the engineer's recommendation to require bi-annual or more frequent inspections and/or maintenance of the drip edge filter?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I agree with all, all of the consulting engineers' recommendations, so.
Point of information, if I can ask a question.
Sure.
How does the town know that that's been followed?
Uh, which one? The inspections?
Yes, the inspections.
They generally have to submit reports. That's usually how maintenance on stormwater.
I don't know the answer to that because we don't ever end up dealing with, um, anything ongoing. It's typically a code enforcement, and I don't know that this is right, but, um, it's typically a code enforcement issue. Once we approve something to follow up or determine that anything's been done. So I don't have a better answer than that.
Could speak to some of that?
Sure, absolutely.
Typically the, there is a, a plan associated with it, with a subdivision for, for management. So it's more of a, if an issue arises, uh, they, they are required typically to file the annual report as Tamara mentioned. Uh, but again, if an issue arises, that they're, they're held to that. It's on the record that that's supposed to be getting done and it's some, it's a recourse for residents and the town.
Thank you.
Uh, any other deliberations from the board on anything? So there's a draft motion for us to consider. Um, I think we've got some amendments that, that we need to discuss and, and get right.
I would, Mr. Chair, if I could just throw this out. Uh, you would, you would raise the issue of the old poles being removed.
Well, yeah.
Uh, that is not addressed in this motion. Uh, so it's not something I contemplated, uh, putting, putting it together, uh, this prepared language for you. I don't know if it's something that would be appropriate given that it's a CMP action or how you might want to handle that, but I just want to throw that out as you're considering the motion.
That's a good point.
It's not really up to them.
I know. That's why I didn't make a.
So it may not be appropriate to address at all here, but I just wanted to raise it.
I don't know that.
I think if I take a chainsaw to their poles, I'll get in trouble.
I mean, I don't, yeah, it would be great to tie it to the project, but realistically, I don't know how, what control they would have over it. But if someone finds a way that they would, I'd love to hear it. I've still got two poles in front of my house, so I haven't figured out a way to get rid of it.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I have a question on the buffering question. Um, I noticed the placeholder, the little draft language here.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure what, how we want to do that because we're not landscape architects and I don't feel it's appropriate for me to say how many trees and where they should be.
Well, I agree. I was going to start with number seven and work my way up.
Okay.
How to tackle that one. But since you brought it up, I guess my thought is I don't think we should be getting into numbers necessarily. Um, something that we've done in the past along these lines is, um, some type of condition where the applicant works with the, um, I mean, one way to do it is to say, come back to us when you have a landscape plan, we'll approve the project. So we could do that. And then we'll have their professionally drawn landscape plan that we can approve or not. Um, the other thing that we've done in the past is have the applicant work with, um, town staff to implement, uh, what they heard this evening. And, and we basically kind of delegated it to Kristen and Doug to, um, approve a final landscaping plan, more or less. So those are the two options. I mean, obviously the, the cleanest is the first one, but it holds them up another month. Um, so if we can, and well, if staff is agreeable to that route, we could do something like that, that we've done in the past.
If you're asking. Yes. Yeah, yeah, I think I have clear, uh, several notes in the video and, and pretty clear direction on what you're looking for. If that's the route you want to take, we can certainly make sure that, that we're in accordance, that it adheres to what you're looking for.
So I'd, I'd be fine with that. I guess you could help us with the, the language of that condition. If you wanted to, we, you can work on that while we talk about six and seven.
Six minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I just wonder if it's, will, uh, will provide a landscaping plan for staff approval that provides sufficient evergreen trees along the westerly property line, sufficient to blah, 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 blah.
Sure. Yeah, I think something like that would be fine. I mean, Kristen has, you know, the video, like she said, she's got the video, she's here, so.
Could take prior discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Um, so six, I think we agreed that that would be added and seven as well. So I think we're good to go once you have something sorted out that, that you like.
I think so. So that, yeah. So the applicant, um, will provide a landscaping plan for staff approval that provides evergreen trees along the westerly property line sufficient to create a visual buffer to the abutting property in areas where snow storage and other elements are located within the 50-foot perimeter buffer per planning board discussion.
That was too fast for me, but we'll, we'll get to it when you're actually doing the motion.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, before, uh, anything else?
Um, the only thing I would add is that it, I don't think we want that buffer to be only evergreens. We want it to include evergreens, but it should be a mix because I think that'll probably be a more effective buffer and less unnatural.
Okay. And then the only thing I want to go back to, because it was only my comment and I didn't hear anyone else weigh in, was around that reserved parking. I just, I, to me, I feel like, you know, the snow storage, it's already not great. We've already got pavers that are grass and then snow storage that's flat. So we're giving up a lot of buffer. I guess maybe I'll ask you a question. Like what's the, uh, contemplated potential future need for those four spaces? Where does that arise from? I mean, if you needed it, you would have put it in the plan, so.
Yeah, and my understanding is that it kind of arises from the, um, main state housing requirements to, to, while the, uh, senior housing is, um, has different parking requirements for, um, the town than it might have.
Okay.
And so this is just an opportunity to kind of put additional parking in there in the future to allow for the, those requirements, but then not necessarily install them unless they're absolutely required.
Required by like some.
Demand, demand. Right. So that if, if in the event they find that they need more parking because there is a demand for more parking.
But not required by some, uh, ordinance or law?
Correct.
Okay. So you, you, you're not going to run afoul of ordinance law?
Correct. This is, this is an attempt to make sure that we've accounted for them, but if they're not a, actually physically required, then they don't get installed.
Okay. Man, I think in the past for some things like this, we've told people, correct me if I'm wrong, Kristen, but they can come back for an amendment, right?
Uh, I think I've, I haven't thought about that myself, I don't think, not in my time.
I don't know.
But if, if that's something you recall, that's an option. It would certainly end up something, at any point.
I'm just thinking like, if they might need it, like why do it now kind of thing? But if you did it, you would have to put more buffering in to screen more thoroughly.
They could potentially consider a, a note on the plan, like a, requiring a note on the plan that should the, those four spaces be actually developed for use with the, as you said, they were grass pavers. Correct. That, that they would be buffered, that there would be additional buffering. They could say that now. If that's what you want, if they were to come back before you with that, if that's what you expect you would say, that could work.
Personally, I'd rather not have parking spaces in a buffer. I think we've done enough, but it's also obviously nice to have parking close to a building like this, so. I don't know what, what you others think about it.
I have a question for the applicant.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, how, in terms of the parking, percentage of parking that you have here versus the use compared to the other, um, part of the facility that's already been constructed, is there sufficient parking? Is there not enough? Like what, what is the likelihood that you're going to need these spaces, given your existing use in this area? I, I always find that ordinances often require more parking than is actually needed or used. Um, and you don't need to have parking for like Christmas all the time.
Yeah, uh, certainly within our portfolio, um, this, this is more parking than we would typically need in this, in similar locations with similar demographics. Um, that is one reason why, you know, we have the, the four additional spaces that can be added later on. You know, not being a hundred percent sure that we won't need those additional spaces. Maybe we will, but they're designed so that we can do that. But typically for our portfolio, we have, I don't know, it's like sixty to seventy percent of units and senior housing needs a parking space. And we have one for one here.
Yep.
So we're providing quite a bit more.
Yeah, I thought I remembered like point seven or something was typical.
Yeah, it's even, uh, it's a little bit lower for senior than, yeah, than point seven, but.
And I think the ordinance requires the point six, which is I think twenty-nine spaces.
Yeah, we did, that was part of our initial review. I, I don't remember all of them.
Right. I mean, to me, parking in a buffer is not really what we should be doing.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I think we should just say they can't put those spaces there. That, that's my inclination, especially since we're trying to get the, the whole village more walkable and friendly to non-cars. I mean, I don't know. That's my thinking. I don't like parking in the buffer either.
Okay, so the proposed potential parking needs to go.
Yeah.
So we probably need to, I mean, I think we'll include that as a condition because it's on there. It's in their application. So again, we don't want to make them come back next month.
It's easy enough for me. I just erase a few lines.
Yeah, but you need to erase it on all of these copies up here.
We'll provide an updated site plan to staff so they can see it. It's point six.
All right. So you've got something you're happy with?
Sure.
Means you signed up to.
I know. Proposed potential grass paper parking to be eliminated. Surprise.
I think so. Okay, um, do we have a motion?
Yep.
I guess we do.
So I move to approve the application by Avesta Housing Development Corporation, Avesta Meadow View Two LP and Gray Senior Housing Incorporated for an amendment to an approved site plan and subdivision plan for a multifamily twenty-six unit senior housing development located near sixteen Hancock Street, tax map forty-three, lot four zero five dash thirty-nine in the Village Center zoning district. This application received approvals in June twenty twenty-two for site plan, conditional use and subdivision review as well as multifamily housing standards and village design standards. This approval is subject to the following conditions. Do I have to read them?
Uh, probably would since we have.
Oh, it's, okay. I was going to say one through four as printed.
That's fine. Do it that way. Yep.
One through four as printed, um, and then the five. The applicant will submit a landscaping plan for staff approval that provides a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees along the westerly property line sufficient to create a visual buffer to the abutting property in areas where snow storage and other elements are located within the fifty-foot perimeter buffer per planning board discussion. Number six, the applicant will add boulders to protect snow storage area buffer plantings from plow damage. Number seven, the applicant will include bi-annual inspection of the site drip edge filter in the site maintenance plan and conduct cleanouts regularly to ensure proper operation for stormwater management. And conditions eight and nine as presented. And condition ten, proposed grass paper parking to be eliminated.
So our second. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Congratulations. You're back on your way again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So appreciate all the, uh, hard work and changes you guys have made over the past couple of years. I think it, um, came out to be a much better project along the way, so good luck with it.
I hope. Then all I need to do is push this button again.
All right.
I did something. Here we go.
All right, one more. Um, this one is a preliminary plan review, Stillwater Phase Two. This is a request by A H Grover, Inc., represented by Steve Roberts of S J R Engineering, Inc. for planning board preliminary plan review of a proposal to create Phase Two of the Stillwater Pines Residential Open Space Subdivision on the thirty-six point two-nine acre parcel off Woodcock Road, map forty-four, lot oh thirty-two dash one-one-two dash zero 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 in the medium density zoning district. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review and the property is subject to a contract zoning agreement.
Are you all set for me?
All set.
All right.
Take it away.
My name's Steve Roberts with S J R Engineering. I'm the design engineer on this project. And, uh, a couple of other people I want to introduce. Ben Grover is the owner of the project. And his boss is sitting next to him, uh, his wife Debbie. Last time I was in this room, uh, I presented, actually I presented this plan uh, that showed in concept form what we were proposing to do on this, on this project. At that meeting, we scheduled a, uh, site walk, uh, and had that site walk. A couple of the planning board members were there. And we had, I don't know, a dozen, fifteen people from the surrounding neighborhood that was there also. And it was a goo, it was a good walk around. We gave a presentation of what the plan was going to entail. And there were questions that were asked. And there were, uh, we walked down each of the proposed roads that were there and, uh, saw what it was that we were trying to do. Since that time, I've continued to work, uh, on the project. We put together a thirteen-page subdivision plan, uh, that, uh, has all the engineering details that go along with the road construction, the stormwater, the, the, uh, sidewalks, the lot designs, hopefully everything that you need to make an evaluation as to having this as a complete subdivision. A lot of information was provided. You all should have gotten something along that line. I apologize for the thickness of it, but that's what it is. A lot of information was provided, you all should have gotten something along that line. I apologize for the thickness of it, but that's what it is.
You need a double-sided printing press.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
I hear you. Well, it, yeah, exactly. The, I don't know how you wanna go through this, it, this is two months' worth of work, uh, that is in here. This is a lot of information. A lot of, uh, review has happened both in my office, uh, and with Kristen and with the town engineer. Um, I do know that this is a public hearing. I'm not sure how you want me to move forward. Uh, basically, the best way for me to introduce the entire project would be to read what I have as an introduction to the, to the project. It's, uh, two pages long, and I can do that if you would like me to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's necessary. I mean, you've, you've introduced it to us before, so I think at this point,
Perfect. Yep.
Um, just hit the highlights of what's changed since the last time you've been here, and since the site walk.
Yep, yep. Yep, well, and the easier, easier way to do that would be to, uh, look at the plans. I don't know, Kristen, if you could.
And just so you know, I'll, I'll kinda walk us through the memo, so we're gonna hit, all you need to do is give an overview for your introduction.
Okay. Yep, yep.
We'll hit, hit the details as we walk.
Yep, uh, basically, on each of the, the first page is the overview of what the, where the plan is located, where the project's located. This is phase two of a phase one subdivision. The next page of the plan is the approved phase one of the subdivision. Uh, we have on sheet number two, a proposed, um, property subdivision plat that will hopefully eventually be signed by, by this group. Uh, it, it shows portions of, uh, phase one and the entirety of phase two, including the, uh, area that's gonna be conveyed to the town of Gray, uh, on the other side of our subdivision, other side of Pleasant River. Um, on sheet three, uh, is an overview of the project showing how lots could have, uh, could be developed, uh, showing house lots, garages, septic systems, driveways. Uh, and I do wanna point out that these are just concept ideas. Hopefully whoever buys these houses, or buys these lots, will have, uh, more detail and more interest than having the same house and garage on every lot that's, that's on this plan. But, for the purposes of showing you that each of the lots can be built upon, um, this is, this is, this meets that idea. Um, we do have, uh, open space, we have smaller lot sizes, uh, with the type of development that we're doing. We have a phase one common area that, uh, will have an additional, uh, parcel of land, uh, given to it, uh, to make it roughly around seventy thousand square feet of, of common park area in the middle of, of this subdivision. Uh, we have two proposed roads, Stillwater Drive, which would go off to the west side of the, uh, existing Woodcock Road. Uh, and then the extension of Woodcock Road, which is another thousand, I, I believe it's another thousand feet of road to a dead end. Uh, the dead, that dead end will eventually be, uh, extended, uh, and, uh, by the town, uh, to provide access down to the town of Gray multipurpose field. The next sheet, on, on sheet four, is basically the soils information from our soils and site evaluator person. Basically, he's done a medium-high intensity soils, gone out and dug test pits to identify the types of soils that are on the parcel of land. And then he's also located, uh, a couple of test pits on each of the lots to show that, uh, septic will be available, um, on each of those, on, on, an acceptable septic location is on each of those lots. Uh, the, uh, next page would be the road plan profile of how each of the roads would be constructed. One of, and I'm looking on sheet five now, the, that would be the extension of Woodcock, uh, Road, uh, basically another thousand feet. You can see that, uh, the road is to be paved, it will have curbing on both sides of the road. One side of the road will have a sidewalk, uh, that will run the entire length of, of that road. Uh, storm drainage for the road will be, uh, uh, through storm drains, catch basins, uh, and piping. Uh, that piping will, uh, be discharged into two, um, soil filter ponds, one, uh, well, each soil filter pond is located at the end of each one of those roads. Uh, the utilities on the, on the project will be, uh, underground utility, uh, for electric. It will be public water and sewer, I've already talked about, it will be through, uh, the septic system. Um, okay, well, while I'm right there, we do show lighting at the intersection with, uh, Stillwater Drive and Woodcock, uh, Road. And we also show lighting at the end of Woodcock Road. And Kristen or somebody that was looking at the plans noted that I did not put lighting at the end of, of Stillwater Drive, and that's my mistake. I should have had that there. Lighting at the end of that road, uh, is, is as important as anything that's there, so people can see that there is no road extension any farther than that. On sheet six, uh, basically it's the same information, only it's, uh, road plan profile for the Stillwater Drive section of road. Uh, that, like I said before, that road is seven hundred, roughly seven hundred feet long. It discharges water into, uh, a, a larger, um, soil filter pond located on lot thirty-three. There's a, there's a stormwater easement that is placed on that parcel uh, to allow, uh, the road water, uh, and other road, and, and other lot water to enter into that, uh, stormwater pond and discharge, uh, into the common open space down to our design points. Um, so lot thirty-three, where the, where the pond is located, would have a driveway that would, uh, run around the side of the, or between the side lot line and where the pond is located to, uh, developed area on the further portion of the lot, behind the area, behind the detention area. On sheet seven, uh, is a blow-up of the, uh, other detention soil filter pond. Uh, it's adjacent to lot twenty-one at the end of Woodcock, Woodcock Road. And again, it's, uh, it's helping to bring the stormwater, uh, treat the stormwater for, uh, purposes of, of pollution. Uh, and it also provides, uh, stormwater controls to, for pre and post-construction, uh, of, of the roads and the development of the lots. One of the things I forgot to mention, uh, on here, this, on page seven, it does show that what a typical cross-section of, of Woodcock Road and Stillwater Drive will look like. Um, this meets your standard, uh, for the road in this location. I do wanna point out that, uh, in the contract zone agreement that was signed, there was a, uh, uh, reduction in the, in the width of the road that, uh, was allowed to happen. Um, we decided to keep the road the full width that we have been, has been gracious and said, yes, go ahead and, and do that. Uh, and as it turns out, it, it is, it works in our benefit, 'cause when we were doing our, our site walk, some of the people that were in the neighborhood had a problem with the width of the existing street that was out there because of the snow keeps creeping in, when, when the plowing activities were going on. We've got the, we've got the full width of road, we've got curbing that's there. So whatever snowbank is gonna happen is gonna be outside of that, outside of that road area. So I think we made the right decision with going with a, with a bigger road. But I just wanted to point out that it wasn't part of the original agreement, we've gone beyond, we've gone beyond what that is. Um, we come into sheet eight, we've got, uh, some more construction details, particularly with regards to general notes, construction of the water lines, uh, catch basins, some erosion control items that are denoted there. Sheet nine has the details that are required for the control structure manhole, uh, manholes that, uh, are key for the, uh, ability of each of those two ponds to limit the amount of flow that comes through, uh, each of those ponds for the two-ten and the twenty-five-year storm events. So they, oh, one of the, one of the questions that has come up in the past is that, uh, from, and I'll get to this. Uh, we have not included house, uh, runoff in our pond designs because one of the, uh, things that we're doing for each of the houses that are out there is whatever wa-, water runs off of the roofs goes into a roof drip edge that will be infiltrated down into the ground and be filtered through, uh, the same kind of filter that each of these ponds have. Uh, and this capacity, the storage capacity of those roof drip edges, uh, meet the twenty-five-year storm event. So we have enough storage that each of those areas, no matter where the houses are constructed or how big the houses are constructed, has that ability to, to, uh, store the stormwater and treat the stormwater, uh, right immediately, which is what you wanna do for any kind of stormwater treatment, treat it as fast as you can. Uh, number, sheet number ten is the, uh, net residential density. I think we've already gotten past this. Kristen has told me that the engineer has signed off on the twenty-two lots that is, has been approved at the last meeting that we were here. Uh, sheet eleven is, uh, one of the concerns that we had when, when we were, uh, at this meeting last time is a blow-up of, of lot sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Uh, these are the areas that's, that were to be, if, if there is such a thing, the area that might be most difficult to construct house lots on. And so we took it upon ourselves to design the lots and the houses, show what, how a typical lot would look like with a full grading plan, uh, and what type of impacts would, would happen with regards to wetlands. And on, as you can see on lot eighteen, uh, that was the lot, if you remember, when we were on the site walk, that was the low one that went down. It went kinda across the wetland. We do have some impacts that were there. I'm looking and seeing, uh, man, I can't see that small, eleven, I think it's eleven hundred square feet of wetland impact uh, that, uh, is needed to just have the driveway, uh, uh, run through that, run through that wetland. Um, part of this application, once we get through the, uh, kinda get your nod that the preliminary part of this is, is good, we need to go to DEP for, uh, a total slot of permit, Site Location and Development Act permit, which will include all of phase one and that impacts, all of phase two and whatever impacts that involves, uh, uh, including, uh, impacts to wetlands and vernal pools. So those items are all, uh, in the process of, uh, being put together for, uh, the application that goes to DEP. Um, and then on the last page is the stormwater, uh, plan, uh, overview that shows everyone how we came to our stormwater numbers. Couple of, of items to note, uh, we had a review that came back from Will Haskell at Golden Palmer, Town Engineer. Excellent. I mean, I, I'm so happy that he did that. The, uh, uh, comments that he had were all constructive. Uh, I agreed with pretty much everything that, that he was asking about. And in fact, we've sub-, we've already submitted the plan back to his office, uh, with the edits and notations uh, for his comments. I think Kristen has a copy of them. Um, and then Kristen has some comments, uh, with regard to planning, uh, and what her comments were. Uh, and I think we, we wanna go through those tonight, and those are, those comments, we're in a, we're in agreement with too, so. Uh, I, I leave it up for you for questions.
All right, thank you for that intro. Any questions from the board? Not here either, okay. So, um, there are three waivers that are being requested, we'll get to those a little bit later. So you had mentioned, um, comments per town's consulting engineer, you're good with everything that Mr. Haskell had included, nothing here we need to talk about tonight?
I don't think so. I submitted something back to him, uh, already. Kristen has a copy of it. Uh, I'm, I'm in hopes of getting ahead of the game a little bit, and we'll see what his comments are when he comes back. But I think I addressed all the items that he had.
Okay, I'm guessing the board is in agreement with everything?
Yeah.
So staff comments, you mentioned, uh, you also didn't have anything we need to go over here, uh, related to staff comments?
A couple of, a couple of things that I wanna flush out a little bit.
Okay, sure.
Um, one of our waivers, we were requesting a hydrogeolot, and I don't know if you wanna talk about this, a hydrogeologic, uh, study, we're asking a waiver for it. We feel that, uh, trying to do a hydrogeologic study on this parcel doesn't make a lot of sense at this point in time. Uh, we're on public water. Uh, we also have, uh, the nitrate analysis, if one were to be done, is, I'm not sure what your town is, ten milligrams per liter or five milligrams per liter? Well, I didn't make the rules, but the way that's interpreted is on the outside perimeter of phase one. And as you can see, our proposed road runs through the middle of that, of our parcel of land. And the parcel of land is on the high point of it, so water will, uh, stormwater runoff, not stormwater runoff. Uh, sewer disposal will follow the surface water flows generally, and it will go over to a wetland over on this side and follow all the way down this area, and then come back into this area. And the same thing will happen through these, through these areas. Generally speaking, uh, and I'm talking generalities, uh, it depends on what the soils are and the slopes are and all that. Nitrates are greatly reduced, uh, to mid, to below the ten milligrams per liter within the hundred-foot number. We're way far away from any property line than a hundred feet. Um, so, I think that's part of the reason why the town engineer said he's in agreement with not ask, not requiring a hydrogeologic study. That's why I think we don't need to have a, a hydrologic study. Uh, Kristen was correct when she points out that there's two items that are in the, in the ordinance that says this, this is what's required. So I'm not sure if that's something that you have the ability to waiver on, or if it's something that's a high-class rule and we gotta do it.
Well, we can talk about it.
Okay.
So, um, and I guess I'm happy. So, and I guess I'm happy to cover waivers now, since we're on the topic. So there's three waivers requested, you know, you saw the, the reasoning that Kristen outlined in the memo, the first one being that it's in a sand or over a sand and gravel aquifer. So, any thoughts on, I'm just gonna take them one by one, so the hydrogeological study?
Yeah, I mean, it's not only over an aquifer, but it's next to the Pleasant River, which is a key trout stream. So I guess I'm inclined to not be in favor of a waiver.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I feel the same, the Pleasant River really puts it over the threshold for me. And I, you know, if, if the study is done and there's a need for more mitigation of the septic systems and whatnot or different locations, I think that's what we wanna know. This development, while it's, it's being done under lots of, you know, proper considerations is, is a substantial change to this area, so we wanna make sure we mitigate it as much as we can, I think, so.
Yeah, and I am also not in favor of this waiver, so I think you got your answer there.
I do, I hear you loud and clear, yeah.
The next requested, we might as well do all three right now, since I've got them right here, was the phosphorus management plan. I'll start with you.
I think that, that sounds like if both a town's engineer and staff are okay with it, particularly with the other study, it seems like that might be a, an okay one to give a waiver on.
Yeah, and I would also be okay with that waiver.
Same.
Okay, so you got your answer there, and then third one, high intensity soil survey. Just gonna work myself my way back and forth.
I, I would support that.
And I would support that as well.
Same, I'm okay with it too.
All right, so we'll actually vote on those a little bit later, I'm just gonna stick with the order that we're going here. So there was a comment on driveways and a suggestion from town staff that the consulting engineer identify which, if any, driveways weren't engineering. I thought that sounded like something that we should include.
Agreed.
So, yeah, so we'll include that.
Can I?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Can I just ask, what is it that you wanna see? When, when somebody says should be required for one or more lot, make an engineer driver, what, what is it that you want me to do?
So I don't, I mean, I don't know what specifically the engineer does, but I mean, he's, he or she, well, I'm saying he because I know it's him.
Oh, sorry. I was thinking it was getting outsourced, it's late.
Well, it is outsourced.
Well, I mean, right, beyond, beyond the person standing in front of us.
Well, actually, it's the town engineer that we're talking, who is also he.
Oh, my goodness.
I think the hole is just getting deeper.
It is, good gracious.
So he, Mr. Haskell would review the, the topography of a site and say, yes, this is something that basically needs engineering design, like as in the homeowner can't just go cut in with an excavator and cut the drawing, that, cut the driveway, it would have to be to some prescribed design that's in your plan. That's my understanding, but Kristen can.
All right, so if he come, if he comes back and says, I, I need a driveway for design for lots six, seven, eight, I just do a, like a little site plan for the driveway?
We can correspond with you on that, on that Steve, we'll have some back and forth on that, if, if that's something that the board wants to go with. There are, there are slope requirements and like drainage in the ordinance, so they would be looking to see that they adhere to that and to have actual plans for them, so when you come, when that person who owns the lot comes to the code office and says, I'd like a driveway entrance permit, that they have a plan, it's ready to roll. We've, we've had some issues in the past with some driveways that were not draining properly and affecting the road and icing and erosion and so on, so.
Yeah, I've noted those driveway comments on the plan and I'd be, I'd be happy to do whatever you want or he wants to have for driveway designs. I just also wanna point out that these are conceptual locations, so what, if there's, if the owner of the lot wants to do something different, does the, do we have to come back in to the planning board for that? Because it's now gonna be part of your approval.
That's typically the goal, I think, is to have it be part of your approval.
Right.
So it's in the place where you want, where the planning board approves that it should go, given the topography and,
Right.
That's typically the, the goal.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Keeps it cleanest after the fact.
Right, it's probably something that a future owner could come to a staff review committee meeting, not a full planning board meeting and,
Okay.
Which is just the, the chair of the planning board, the planner and the code enforcement officer. And, you know, you basically have a, a drawing of what you wanna do and those three people review it, so.
Perfect, I, I just didn't wanna lock some lot owner into one particular location because each lot is different.
That's why we'll, we'll do that, but it's, to be revised is not what you're doing here again, it's, should be a simple process, it would be the staff review.
Okay, good, all right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to note, number one, the first comment got skipped over.
Sorry.
Which is probably one of the biggest pieces that, that needs to be discussed.
Yeah, thanks, so let's go back to that. So Kristen, you wanna outline your concern with this one?
I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware, and I, I think Steve has some updated plans to share, I don't know if you brought those tonight, showing the setback from the significant vernal pool, the two fifty setback, which is new, it's not something that's in your current packet. So that, that significant vernal pool is partially impacting phase one and is also impacting several lots that are proposed in phase two. So the feasibility of those lots, I think, is kinda pending some DEP review, that, that slot review, that overall review, uh, cause it's gonna be cumulative for phase one and phase two for the impact of that, that area, that wetland area. So the, the ability to have, have feasible building envelopes on those impacted lots with the buffer, I think it's something that, that Steve is prepared to speak to tonight further and it's just something I wanted to, to flag for the board.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So can I? Can I show you what we're talking about here for vernal pools?
Go for it.
Yep, vernal pool right here, and our, our proposed roads are located here. This vernal pool is basically right between phases one and phases two. So there is a requirement that you gotta set back two hundred fifty feet from a vernal pool. But that doesn't mean it can't be developed. What DEP would rather call it is a consultation with, with DEP. And what they're gonna try to do is try to keep, they're, they're allowing up to twenty-five percent of the canopy within that two hundred and fifty foot area or radius away from the vernal pool to be developed as part of the subdivision. What they will try to do, and we, I, we agree, is to stay as far away from the actual vernal pool itself with the amount of development that's happening. So what we've done is we've calculated what we think the phase one requirements were to be based on, if somebody were on lot nine, for example, there's no, there's no requirement on that lot number nine that would stop that clearing activity almost to the vernal pool. We don't own that lot anymore, so what we've done is assumed that they can, they can clear all that way. We've added lot nine, lot ten, and well, lot eleven has no impact and twelve has no impact, and thirteen has a little bit that, that can happen. So what we've done is we've added those areas together, found the total area around the two hundred fifty feet around the vernal pool and said, all right, how much is twenty-five percent? And we've determined that number, the plans that you will have at my next, at the next meeting, did you make copies of that, Kristen?
I, I did not before this meeting, no.
We'll show how that calculation is done. And as it turns out, what we show on phase two development is lot fourteen, lot fifteen, and lot sixteen, which all are within that vernal pool area, can be cleared to more than what we're proposing in our development right now. So this area here is our clearing limit, and if you, if you go further in, into the vernal pool, closer to the vernal pool, and I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna guess about thirty feet into the woods, they would be able to clear additional area, but we're restricting it because of the clearing limit that we have shown on the plan. The other thing that we're doing with, in particular with lots fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen is, and this will be another item for discussion, is that we're trying to keep as much of the canopy area along the property line, side property lines, so that we can get established canopy and established length of wooded area that will still maintain that two hundred and fifty foot radius distance to the vernal pool. So just because it's a vernal pool doesn't mean we can't develop within that two hundred fifty feet. However, we need to get that approval through the DEP, through that twenty-five percent calculation.
Got it.
Gotcha.
Thanks, got it and you know it, so you know what you need.
Yep.
That's what we wanna make sure. Okay, lot clearing, so I go, on this one, I'll defer to both of you since I wasn't able to attend the site walk, it sounded like there was some discussion about lot clearing and maybe some discussion at the site walk that occurred, some concerns or whatnot, so did either of you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, well, there's some nice trees out there that we, some, some really nice ones, obviously, a lot, many will go, there won't be anything to be done about that, but the more of the existing trees that can be preserved versus clearing and replanting, you know, new baby trees is definitely the way to go. I'm looking at the, this plan on page, sheet three, and it looks like where you've got, you know, you have a fair amount of clearing limits indicated here. I, I know, obviously, when you're, you know, you're building the road and the places where the, the houses are gonna go, those are, it's tougher to preserve veget- existing vegetation there. There might be some trees that can be preserved, but it would be great to see as much as possible and I would like to see street trees, I know eventually on the final plan, we're not getting there yet, but, yeah, there, that, I'm not sure if, I'd be curious to know if this plan or if, what, what your thinking is on that because there's some really nice trees out there.
Okay, thanks, Tamara?
Yeah, likewise, I was really leaning towards wanting to see a landscape plan where you do know what trees you're gonna maintain and what you're going to input, for sure, yeah. There's a lot of nice trees out there.
So the purpose of the sideline trees is?
I wasn't there, so I'm letting you guys run with this one.
I mean, the purpose of what, maintaining trees?
Maintaining the sideline trees.
Between the lots. It, it just makes, I mean, I, I'm, I'm struggling to say, like, why wouldn't you keep trees that exist? I, I don't, I don't know why.
Can I answer that question?
Yeah, I would love to hear why you wouldn't keep trees if you could.
I, I don't like cutting trees either, but I've done this so many times and he'll tell you that if you're in a wooded area and you've got really tall trees, particularly pines,
Yeah.
and then you, and then you clear an area out of them, they're gonna blow over, they're a safety tree. It's an issue if you have a house that's being built there or is there and it blows over, it crushes the house. And I know this for a fact because it happened. And when those big pine trees come down, they come down hard. So I'm, I'm wondering if there's some kind of a halfway, halfway zone that we can do here that we can keep some of the smaller stuff that's there, but all the tall stuff, we should take out cause it's gonna, it's, it's gonna be hard to blend the lots that are adjacent to each other
Yeah.
by keeping the natural wooded area that's there?
Mr. Chairman, I totally get that, and I'm not, I'm not saying that we wanna keep the really big tall trees that are probably gonna die and drop, drop on the houses, that's not what I'm suggesting. But there are some other, there's some spruces, some other smaller trees that, that would make sense to keep, maybe the, maybe particularly, there were some really nice spruce out there. Those were the ones that I was noticing, not the super pile white pines that, that won't live once their, their neighbors are lost, but, and that's where a landscaping plan, where someone looks at it and says, like, oh, this is a good tree, it would live and it wouldn't drop on a house, would be useful to have, so, somebody with some expertise around which trees would make it and which wouldn't, but just to sort of blanketly clear because, you know, that's easier is, is not, this, this is just particularly for this property, I think.
All right, I, I think that we're probably talking the same thing with both of you. The question that I have is how do I show that to you? I mean, it's, that's more of a construction judgment that happens when we find out what, where the driveway's gonna go, where the house is gonna go, what type of grading is involved with that particular house and driveway?
Yeah, I mean, just for context, this isn't something I remember the board ever really getting into on a residential subdivision to this level, like where we're prescribing.
I, I guess I'm not asking.
Lot by lot.
I'm not asking to do that, I think really the recommendation from me is that it would be, I do see some limit of lot clear, of clearing, which is nice, and I, it just occurs to me as I walk that site, that there were just some really nice trees that were smaller that would be nice to pre-preserved, and maybe that's just, I'm conveying that now and it's a wish and there isn't really anybody to enforce it, that might be where we are.
You do have authority, as I outlined in the memo, page fourteen, top of page fourteen. You do have authority to request a landscaping plan?
Okay, and the landscaping plan could include a reference to, okay, this particular tree or that particular tree gets kept, kept because it's not, it makes sense, I mean, I think that's really, I, I'd be fine with that. I'm not asking to sort of like keep this tree that's in the middle of somebody's potential driveway, that's not what I'm thinking.
Right.
So landscaping plan should cover it.
Sounds like the board is looking for a landscaping plan that highlights any particular trees of value or interest and, and sort of conveys a desire of not clearing line to line, something along those lines?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was also a fact that we heard in the community from the folks.
And you're, you're not looking for the trees as a screening or anything like that? Or, or are you looking for a screening so that you, you can't look from one lot to the next lot?
Point of information, the, the, the opposite side of the street where you're talking about the vernal pool is cut differently from the side of the street you're talking about now.
Correct.
Is that the kind of thing that you're looking for, I'm just asking, clarify. If you look at the,
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you look at the,
The clearing limit goes, kind of does a swoop as opposed to total clear across all the lots, yeah.
For example, on lots twenty-nine through thirty-two, they're just coming all, we're just coming a straight line of clear cut.
Yeah.
Stillwater drive.
Yeah, I was talking about lots fourteen through nineteen.
Yeah, the vernal pool impacted area that he mentioned.
Fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, we will have, we will have a buffer, a treat buffer. Fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, we will have, we will have a buffer, a treat buffer area. We, we wanna do that for the purposes of the vernal pool.
Gotcha. I, I suspect that it might not make sense along lot, you know, lots twenty.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-eight through, yeah, through twenty-two, there might be, to be honest, I just, I'd like to see a landscaping plan with some street trees along the area where we're gonna clear. It doesn't make sense to keep ones that aren't gonna live, but I, I wanna see a subdivision that has street trees. I, I guess, it's always been something that I've been able to do when I served on other planning boards. Maybe this, this town doesn't require street trees, but I'd like to see street trees.
Yep, I'm hearing you, and we can do that. Ben just threw out an idea. What we could do is the big tall pines, for example, and spruce trees, spru. Hemlock. Right. Those, if, if we can take those out, let's just say fifteen feet on either side of the, of the sideline, and then leave the remaining trees that are in there, does that accomplish what you're doing? 'Cause the, the trees that are, are most at risk for blowdown would, would be the, the tall pines and, and that. Does that work with what you're looking for, or?
I think so, but I'm just, I think a landscape plan would satisfy.
Come on, uh, come on.
So what, what we're dealing with is, we don't know what home, the home buyer's gonna do. So if, if we're, just like the driveways, the driveways are easy enough, 'cause you can come back to, to meet with the chair and whatnot, and discuss moving your driveway, but clearing wise, you, a landsc, you'd have to spend a ton of money and have them go out and plot all the property lines. Then you'd have to hire somebody to look at all the property lines, and then, when the home buyer comes in, they may disagree with it. So if you do no cuts, like we've, like we're gonna have to do, when we, when we designed this, we designed around the vernal pool, and then we got the sketch plan, and I think you mentioned you didn't want all that information. He's already done the design. So, the other side of the street, we've got to leave strips, meaning, I don't know which lots they were, on the, on the three lots along the vernal pool, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. So we could do the same thing on the other side of the tree, on, on the street, and achieve the same thing, but not hemlock and pine. We've already seen a massive hemlock that's fallen on one of the neighbor's properties that we've agreed to clean up this winter. It's three, four thousand dollars. I think you guys have noticed it.
Yeah.
The same thing's gonna happen. I mean, I've done this for close to fifty years now, so if we leave, and to, to hire a landscaper to come in and make a scenario on, on not knowing what home buyer's gonna do, it's virtually impossible. So we're gonna just throw money at something and, and not come up with, so if we denote, like he said, thirty feet, and then the, the topography of the development comes into play, that olive woodcar extension, the topography climbs and drops. So, when you leave trees between the lots, one guy fills around his house, the other guy has to cut a little, and then you got a strip that's left that's natural, that's lower than both lots. It's a nightmare. So when we did phase one, and I think it looks good, we cut everything. Street trees, we never got to that. I have no problem putting a street tree on each lot. We don't need a landscaper for that.
Okay.
Everything in North Yarmouth we've done, we've used flowering pear, and they look really nice, and if they, or if you guys want a hardwood, whatever, we'll put a street tree on each lot. I just think if we're gonna, we're gonna get ourselves into a wormhole, and then find out that the topography's, it's gonna look, it's gonna look tough. And I don't wanna throw money at something, not, I mean, everything adds up to, to get to the final point of selling a lot to somebody, and they pass out, and you tell them the price. I mean, you could spend thirty, forty thousand dollars with a landscaper, and they're not even gonna come close to.
Okay.
So like Steve said, what do you, what do you desire? I mean, I think phase one looks good. I know Doug about passed out when we did it, 'cause it never got brought up at the planning board. It was during COVID, I wasn't here, it was, and I'm not blaming it on anybody, it just, but when we cut it, we cut everything. Nobody's planted a tree yet, and we talked about this tonight. I think those lawns and those homes look awesome. So when you get into, if you had a flat piece of property, you could do, you could do the scenario you're talking, because everybody's house is gonna be built to the same elevation, but we don't have that anymore. That land's gone, so now we're dealing with land with topography. And if you save trees, I know you got, you're gonna, one guy's gonna be built up here, the other guy may be lower, and then halfway in between, you got a strip of original trees, and it just doesn't look it, it's hard to match. I really think phase one looks awesome. It doesn't have street trees, I, I agree with you, they're expensive, they're three fifty apiece, four hundred bucks, but if that's what you want, we'll do that. But I don't really wanna save the trees between the lots, I'd rather clear them and do it. Right, we have to save them on these lots. I mean, he did the design around DEP already for these, and we have to save them, and there are some hemlock in there, and hemlock had diseases and pine will fall over. So it's, in that type of ground, it'll happen, and then we'll have the same scenario we got, and we're just, we've offed it up to the people to clean the tree out, but it isn't our responsibility.
Mr. Chairman, I, that, that's helpful information, I haven't really appreciated.
I mean, I just, I like to do my, I think phase one looks great. Everybody's lawn matches, there's no ditches between them, other than the ditch on the road that I disagree with, but there again, that, that was during COVID, and blame everything on COVID. We never should've done that. It should be a closed storm system, but other than that, phase one looks awesome. And the proof is in the pudding.
I guess, given that retaining along the front might not make sense in this case, but I do think that a street tree, at least one for each of these lots.
And we have no problem with that.
Would be what I'd like to see, so.
Okay.
Agreed.
So, I'm fine either way, so I guess you've got your answer, which is, street trees? I think the rest of it, I think, is not really practical to think about landscaping plans to save wooded trees and whatnot, and I agree.
Good feedback.
I agree with the, you know, pine trees are a problem, and, um, yeah. So I think we'll stick with a street tree on the plan.
Yep.
Per property. Go with that.
Yep.
Okay.
On, on each lot.
Yep. Yep. So then, uh, there were planning comments on open space, sputters, and traffic. Did the board have any disagreement or questions with any of that? I had, I had highlighted the light at the end of Stillwater Drive, but you already mentioned earlier you've added that. Monumentation, staff had the recommendation for the granite markers at the intersections. You, uh, are you agreeing that you'll do all that?
Yep, no, we're all set with that.
Yep.
It's not a requirement, but knowing how survey works and how iron pipes move the granite is the real solution, so I agree.
Okay. And then trails was the other one that you showed approximate locations. And then eleven, eleven was kind of the big one for me, that you'd need to essentially finish phase one before you get your phase two final approval.
Working on it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, expect that. And then, um, water looked okay as well. Anything on any of that that the board had? All right, then you had your public safety input from the fire chief. You good with that? I'm asking you.
We submitted the plans to the fire chief, he sent an email back, it should've been in your packet, I believe, that said he's okay with it, but we need to submit our finalized design to the gray water district for.
Yeah, you saw your note about the end, end of line requirements?
Yep.
Okay. All right, and this is a public hearing, so open it up to the public now, in case there's anyone, there's nobody in the room. Anyone online that would like to speak to this application?
I have a question, maybe now would be an appropriate time.
It would be, since you're the public.
You mentioned that you were changing the road design from what was agreed to in the CZA. Can you do that unilaterally?
Ask the question again, I, I always.
You said you were gonna widen the roads?
Yes.
But the CZA set a specific dimensions for the road.
It was smaller, yes.
Right, and my question to you is, can you unilaterally change that agreement?
I assume so.
I don't think you can.
No?
No.
So do we need to go back to a small road again?
I don't know. That's a good question. The other question I have is that I no longer see the crossing on Pleasant River on your design.
Because it's all in phase one. I don't have the design for that.
That's been done.
But it's part, it's part of.
Yeah, I, I don't think you can just kind of, you know, actually change it. And the, so, but the crossing isn't in yet? Okay, but it doesn't show on the plane? Okay. I don't know where the record of that would be.
The CZA is.
Melinda's already found it.
Yeah, it's on page three. That would, I think, be a question for our attorney.
Okay.
To be, can you exceed the standards?
We're not gonna work it out here, so the CZA reads shall be eighteen feet, so I would say you need to follow up with Kristen and the town, how to resolve, resolve that.
Just out of curiosity, the three planning board members, would you support a larger road, or do you want the small road?
Well, I would support it, but I would also tell you that that says shall, and shall means shall, so.
Yeah, he's, he's got money in his pocket on that one, so.
There was a significant amount of work done at the request of the original phase to change that, so I was more than a little surprised to hear you suggest that you were just gonna go and change that back, because we jumped through a lot of hoops to make that change for you.
And it was one of the problems at the, at the, during the public site walk.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it shouldn't change, but I'm just saying I don't think it can be done unilaterally.
All right, so we'll, we'll get with Kristen and see where.
Ask me, I would understand wider, but you gotta work that out. So, we're not gonna solve it here, because that's something that you'd have to talk to the attorney on, or change it, or whatever, but.
Thank you for that.
I personally hope it ends up being wider as the solution. Okay, so.
I don't see anybody online.
Okay. I thought I hit our.
Oh, wait, we do have one hand, who just raised it?
Okay, go ahead and call on the person.
I seem to unmute. I don't know if, if, Kyle, can you unmute? I don't seem to have authority to unmute folks. Or Dina, if you can unmute yourself, and turn on your camera, or.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can?
Yep, so go ahead and tell us your name and.
Okay, um, I am Dina, and I am part of the existing Woodcock Road, and I've lived here for, we bought our house, it's a single family house about twenty-one years ago. Do, I wasn't able to attend the site walk, so I don't know, I apologize, but I don't know what was brought up during that. I don't know if there was any, um, if there was anybody from the original Woodcock Road there, but I just, I have called the town, and I spoke to the planning coordinator, I believe it is, because the first notice I, I recall getting was about the site walk, and I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything about road fees, or what's going on with the road. Like, we used to have an association, or I guess we do have an association, but I don't know, I don't, I don't know what's going on. And I just wanted to kind of come to this meeting to find out what's going on with the management of the, of the road, if the town is taking that over, or if that's still in review. So that's one of my questions.
Okay, and what's your next question?
My next question is, uh, let's see, about the mailboxes. I don't know if anybody had brought it up or not, but the mailboxes for the existing Woodcock Road, is there any, any plan, at least with the second phase, to remove the mailboxes at the end of the road, and include some of the postal boxes for the existing Woodcock, for the existing Woodcock people? I don't, I also cannot see any of the Woodcock information on the packet that you provided, so I didn't know about the two roads, the extension of Woodcock, I don't know where, what that looks like. And I just wonder if anything is going to be built up behind my lot, if that's gonna be preserved. So those are some of my questions.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll ask you to, once public comment closes, well, you can answer all the questions at once.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Do you wanna ask what lot she is?
Sure.
So we can look, look at it, if she knows.
So, yeah, well, that, that was why I didn't ask. Could you provide your address, so we can figure out which lot is yours, when he answers your question?
Yep, I'm lot nine.
Oh, okay, lot number nine, perfect.
I'm, well, I'm number nine, yes.
Oh, number nine.
Number nine?
Yes.
Original Woodcock.
I don't know, I'm not sure which lot it is. It's the first, I'm the first house on the left. I'm the very first house on the road.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else?
I don't believe so, let me double check. No, she's the only participant.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing section of the meeting, and so you had three questions. One was about the road association, one was mailboxes, and the other was adjacent development to number nine.
Yeah, absolutely want you to. The, uh. All right.
So, existing Woodcock has, has a long line of mailboxes on Route one fifteen. I'll take the mailbox issue first, it's easy. So when we did phase one, we put, per the postal service, we put up the gang mailbox, and we made a, we put it up right on the edge of the walkway out front. They're very expensive, they're like four thousand bucks. Yeah, they were like twenty-five hundred a few years ago, and COVID again. So, we're not dealing with existing Woodcock's mailboxes, as simple as that. I mean, that's years and years ago, you know? So if they wanna, if the existing Woodcock wants to do a gang mailbox, there's plenty of room, and like I say, they're about five thousand bucks. So that's the mailbox. As far as us doing anything behind her, no, it's all developed. I believe she's right here, she's right behind, so that's all developed. So no, we're not, that's, nothing's being done behind her lot. Uh, what was the other, oh, as far as winter maintenance. Uh, what was the other, oh, as far as winter maintenance, Kristen can answer that and answer correctly, and that should be.
Pass it along.
The, the, the winter maintenance application for the entirety of Woodcock within Stillwater Pines. Was submitted by Mr. Grover, and we had to pursue original Woodcock, which has different ownership, as, as Dinas stated. So we have both of those elements in place now to grant a winter maintenance easement to the town, and that's going to the town council on Tuesday. For consideration.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't, I couldn't really, can you hear me still, am I still?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't quite hear what you said, is it going under review this week? For the existing Woodcock to be maintained by the town?
So the, the entirety of Woodcock Road will be considered by the council on Tuesday night to be plowed by the town.
Okay, okay. The other, I, I, I forgot to mention one other thing.
Okay, so I've already closed public hearing, but if you can make it quick, we'll include it, go ahead.
Okay, the other portion of this was, I had mentioned when I called the town. Is that we had paved and we have a very long driveway, it was very expensive. Prior to this all starting, we had paved our entire driveway. The end, when, when they put this new paved our dri, our road. It raised the level of the road and our driveway now has a very large dip at the end of it. Is that something that we can address or, I mean, can, what can we do about that?
So, we're reviewing phase two tonight and unfortunately, this is, I mean, you could talk to them about it. But that's not something that we're reviewing tonight, we're reviewing a different phase of the project, so it's a separate issue. So, at least for here tonight, it would be not the right place to bring it up.
Okay.
Sounds like something you could work through, your road association, I guess would be my suggestion. But it's at least not for tonight's planning board. It's not, unfortunately for you, it's just not what we're reviewing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, recommended changes.
You said you closed the public hearing?
I did.
Okay, so like a few minutes ago? Shout it to the minutes, just making sure I'm accurate.
I don't, I didn't state the time, but. So, alright, discussion points, we've covered some of this. So I think we could probably move through it pretty quickly. Engineered driveways, I was a yes on that, I think we were yeses, right? So, we talked about that. Waivers, we should formally vote on the waivers. So, I'll at least take a straw poll here so we have a vote on it. Does the board agree to support the requested waiver for the hydro geological assessment? All in favor of that? That's none. Does the board agree to support the requested waiver for the phosphorus management plan? All in favor for that?
Yes. Yes.
So that's unanimous. And then, does the board agree to support the requested waiver for the high intensity soil survey?
Yes.
I'm a yes, so that's unanimous as well. Alright, so we've covered a lot of this ground already, so landscaping plan, we do not want to require landscaping plan. But the request is that there be a street tree for every lot. Right, so we're good with that. Any comments on the open space or trails? I did not have any.
I just wonder about maintenance, I mean, if they're meant to be public access trails, I just wanna ensure that there's a maintenance plan associated with them.
So, do you have a maintenance plan for the trails?
We can put it, we can put it into the homeowners association as, as part of the maintenance for it.
That would be great, thank you.
Yep, thank you. As far as recommended changes. Let's just make sure we didn't, yeah, I just wanna make sure we didn't skip any. So, I think we. So number one, we've been convinced that. And, you know, to his point, he made a good point, that if you're doing grading and you have a ditch full of trees, that would not look good. So I think we would not recommend one. Require clearing of a roadway into the common park as presented by the developer. Clearing.
Is that between lot twenty-eight?
How is that a change though? So what's, what's, Kristen, what's the recommended change?
I was just speaking to whether or not you want it to weigh in at all regarding that clearing. Right now it's shown as kind of a driveway cut into the open space area so people can access it. Just putting it out there for conversation, if you want it to require parking or if you wanted it to only be a trail. Or if you wanted the seat changes from what was presented on the plan.
I think that's up to them, what they want.
We show that on sheets. And what proposal?
Yep, that is shown, just didn't know if you wanted any input on how it's shown or if that was where you wanted to weigh in. It's fine to me, it's shown, yeah.
Okay, street light we covered, monumentation we covered, require completion of phase one we covered. And we covered, and you're aware of the Graywater District review, okay, so we've covered all that. Okay. So, waivers. We're not gonna do the first one. We've voted on the fir, the second two, we covered that, sorry, going a little bit out of order here. So you've got your two, your two waivers, but not the first one. So now we're at whether we feel like the application is complete.
Did, did you already make, you already made the motion to do the two waivers, correct?
Well, we actually didn't do it with motions, so we probably should. We did more of a straw poll, so we'll just do it with motions. So, if someone wants to formally make a motion for the first one, we'll go through it that way. Cause we really should have done it with motions and discussion.
Do we wanna do a motion on the waivers before we talk about preliminary approval then?
Well, it's, the next step is whether it's complete.
Okay.
And then preliminary approval.
Okay.
So, yes, I would do it at the waivers first, that's fine, cause he'll, even if it's not complete, he needs that.
Yeah, okay.
So, like, for example, if we waived all three, we might be more inclined to say it's complete.
Yeah.
And if we didn't waive any, we'd be less inclined, so.
Gotcha. Mr. Chairman, I will take a stab at it here.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm here, we need to make, we, I sort of was trying to move too quickly. We did a straw poll basically on the waivers, so we should actually have a motion. And vote affirmatively or not for each waiver. Sorry, I'm redoing that.
Okay.
So I'm at the bottom of sixteen essentially.
Okay, I think I'm ready. I move to approve the following waivers for the request of A.H. Grover, Inc., represented by Steve Robridge, S.J.R. Engineering, Inc. For planning board preliminary approval review or proposal to create phase two of the Stillwater Pines residential open space subdivision. On the thirty-six point two-nine acre parcel off Woodcock Road, map forty-four.
Sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you, I wasn't clear. We need to vote individually on the waivers only.
Okay.
Not the draft.
This is just for waivers.
This is the waiver.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what she, that's what she thought.
Yeah, but I'll just do one waiver. This is waivers only, and then I'm not going to include waiver, the first one. I would only say the second one and the third one.
Well, we need to vote on the first one because they requested it.
Oh, so we have to vote to not give them waiver, I suppose, okay. I was starting to vote to give them two waivers, so let me finish the first two waivers. Let's do, and then we'll vote to not give them a waiver, how about that, does that work?
I just, what I wanted to make sure is that you weren't reading all three together.
No, 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 I'm not going to, that's right.
So, we need to consider them individually.
Correct.
And, sorry.
Alright.
Go ahead, sorry I interrupted.
Thirty-six point two-nine acre parcel off Woodcock Road, map forty-four lot zero-three-two dash one-one-two dash zero-zero-zero. In the medium density zoning district, this proposal is, is subject to major subdivision review and the property is subject to contract zoning agreement. Waiver, the waivers to be granted, the, starting with number two. The four zero one point seven three, seven point three D requirement for a phosphorus management plan. As the project is not located in the watershed of Great Pond. And a second waiver to be granted, the four zero one point seven point four point A. Requirement for a high intensity soil survey per engineering review finding the provided medium and high intensity survey to be sufficient, period.
Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion, all in favor, okay.
Okay. I'm gonna, do I have to read this whole damn thing again?
You did it a different way than we've ever done, but that's, that's fine.
I move to deny.
You can't do that.
Oh.
You have to vote, you have to move in the affirmative.
Okay, I see what you're saying, alright. Move to approve the following waivers for the request by A.H. Grover, Inc., represented by Steve Robridge of S.J.R. Engineering, Inc. For the planning board preliminary plan review, proposal to create phase two of Stillwater Pines residential open space subdivision. Of three thirty-six point two-nine acre parcel off Woodcock Road, map forty-four lot zero-three-two dash one-one-two dash zero-zero-zero. In the medium density zoning district, this proposal is subject to major subdivision review and the property is subject to a zoning, contract zoning agreement placeholder. The four point zero one point seven point four B requirement for a hydro geological assessment. As the project is using public water and septic systems.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion, all in favor? It's none, it fails zero to three, well, we stumbled our way through that. And you've learned your lesson on that one.
I did, yeah, I sure did, no, won't be doing that again.
Alright.
I'll have PTSD after that one.
Okay, so next up is whether the subdivision applica, application is deemed complete. So I think, I mean, it's complete other than the hydro geological survey that they need. So.
There is a, so a placeholder in your draft motion for preliminary approval number three that references that they will need to submit that. As prior to final, final approval.
Oh, gotcha.
Just for your, for your consideration, do you wanna handle it?
I'm too traumatized.
Well, I mean, shall we find it complete first before we get to preliminary approval? Do you agree that it's complete, Kristen, absent the hydro geologic?
Absent, yeah, yeah, with the condition that that's required before final, yes.
Okay, but we need to find, I'm not talking about preliminary approval. I'm talking about, we need to first determine that the application is complete.
If, yeah, if you don't feel it's complete until you get the hydro geological study, then I don't think it'd probably be appropriate to move on preliminary approval tonight.
Right, that's.
So that's your call.
That's what I'm getting at, so, do you have an opinion on that that you'd like to share with us about? I think it, I mean, doesn't matter a whole lot except that we're gonna get through a couple more motions tonight rather than next time.
Yeah, I mean, it's given, I guess it depends how you think you're gonna interpret the hydro geological. If it comes back to you saying that there's an impact on the river, on the aquifer, how you think you might handle that? If there's a way to address it before final approval, or if it's something you really wanna deal with before giving preliminary. Obviously, we don't know if it's gonna show anything, that would be a concern.
I mean, to me, it's not a big deal because we're either gonna find it, we're gonna either take a couple minutes to find it complete now. Or it will be complete next time when we have your, your hydro geologic study. So I think, in practical terms, to me, it doesn't matter unless there's a reason why you'd like it to be complete in a draft. A preliminary approval tonight for some other reason.
It doesn't matter to me, but I'm always willing to have another step forward, so.
That's what I figured.
If it can be complete, at least we've met a standard other than the waiver that was denied tonight.
Yep, and the motion, it does say for preliminary plan review, complete for preliminary plan review, not complete for final.
So, I mean, to me, I think it's, that's fine, I would be fine with that if somebody wanted to make that motion to find it complete.
Move to find complete per four zero one dot seven dot one. The application by A.H. Grover Incorporated for preliminary plan review of a proposal to create phase two. Of the Stillwater Pines residential open space division on the thirty-six point two-nine acre parcel off Woodcock Road. Map forty-four lot zero-three-two dash one-one-two dash zero-zero-zero. In the medium density zoning district, this proposal is subject to major subdivision review and the property is subject to a contract zoning agreement.
Is there a second?
Would we add that it's subject to the condition that we need the hydro geological study or that's not needed because of what we just said? Okay.
I was gonna, I wa, I, I was going to mention it in discussion.
Okay.
Is how I was gonna do it.
Okay, second.
Is there any discussion? So, my point of discussion is just to note that you need to provide that hydro geologic survey. All in favor? That's three, nothing, unanimous, okay, so.
Thank you.
Alright, so now we can consider preliminary approval if we'd like. So we, if we do consider it, we did not grant the first one.
Number five. Do you wanna change to street trees instead of landscaping plan? I think six you can probably get rid of, I think that might be.
It's already shown, right?
Yeah, it is shown, not that wording that doesn't apply.
The, this plan that we've seen still needs to be amended under number seven, right? He's added it, but it's in his own plan.
Correct.
Right, so we still need seven. And I think we should need everything else. And, um.
If you wanna add to number ten, the maintenance plan for the trails, do you wanna add that there maybe?
Yep.
HOA docs?
And then eight, eight's a big one, right? So, you're not gonna get your final vote until everything is squared away for phase one. Somebody have a marked up motion that they'd like to put forth?
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Sure.
The question about this, the width of the road.
Oh, that's a good point.
I wonder if that makes preliminary not appropriate, given that's kind of a big question, it would affect a lot of things.
Well, I don't know if it affects a lot of things, but it's a big.
Stormwater, I mean, it's not a small thing and particularly with the, the hydro study, I don't know. I just wonder if we're ready for preliminary.
I'd be fine withholding off on preliminary approval, that's a good point, we kinda have two things, you've got the study and. I think it's, it's not gonna really hold you up one way or the other, so.
That would be my.
That will give Kristen, that's fine, and that would give Kristen some time to rewrite the, that draft, uh, uh, motion. I think we're gonna, we're. So, um, I think we're gonna, we're gonna stop there, it looks like.
Yep, no, and that's...
That should be fine, you're not gonna, it's not gonna make really a lot of difference.
So, the next meeting that I come in, uh, basically, I should have the hydro geologic, uh, study as part of the submission, plus the stuff that you already have with Will's comments.
Yeah, we should have feedback by then.
And whatever items that we talked about.
Yep, so I think at the next one, we should be able to work through preliminary and final approval, would be my guess.
Now, can I ask?
As long as you get final, as long as you're done with, with all of the phase one.
Right.
If not, then we can work through preliminary.
Because this has to go to DEP.
Yeah, we need...
My understanding is I couldn't have final until we have DEP.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And there's a six-month timeframe, uh, from what's going on there. And I know Kristen and Ben and I have, have talked. Uh, DEP is overwhelmed and they have a hard time getting back in the six-month timeframe. So, I just throw that out to you.
So we'll get you through preliminary next time then.
Yeah, an extension might be appropriate at preliminary due to the DEP delays 'cause right now they have to come back to you in six months. I think they may not be able to do that in their own. But yeah, the, the DEP review is really key for this project 'cause you have to see that all the lots shown are actually viable for their standards too.
Okay. So I think we'll, um, table it at this time if someone wants to make that motion.
Move to table this matter? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's three-nothing, it's tabled, so we'll see you when you come back.
Thank you all for your help this tonight.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Oh.
Is it just easier if we go back to the, like, to the, I, I, I find this the fact that it was...
I would suggest that Kristen can talk to the attorney and see if it's an acceptable, um, an acceptable change without...
I know Doc's mentioned a million times that it's impossible to go back and change things. Well, we need to reiterate that to me several times. If you can just let us know as soon as possible, because otherwise, you'll, he can just revert back and we can just make it really quick. Because everything else is gonna be easier to accomplish.
Yep, so that's a town, and that's just working out with the town, yeah.
It's not about homework, it's in your, are you gonna do it?
Yeah, yeah, it's in our court, yep.
It's just...
I'll follow up, see...
I like the wider road because of the snow, but...
Yeah, and I imagine the town would do, it sounds like the board would, um, but yeah.
We just don't wanna get into a mountain, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't wanna go back to the council.
I won't take that personally.
No, you know, I mean, he, he...
I understand exactly what you mean.
He was saying with the town, you couldn't change anything, and I guess, I just...
I've never tried to change a CCA, so I can only imagine.
You can, but it's a...
Yeah, we appreciate it, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so I think, uh, last up is a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor? All right, we're outta here. Thanks, everyone.